Good evening all, welcome to the November 16th Planning Board Meeting. Just to introduce some of the Board, Mr. Larry Durkin, Engineering, Rich Thompson, Planning Board Member, Jeanie Merritt, Vice Chair, Planning Director, Mr. Chris Riley, and over in the corner is the Clerk, Nancy Stett. My name's Sean O'Brien. Has the Board had a minute to review the meeting notes from the last meeting?
Yes.
Make a motion to approve minutes from November 2nd, 2023?
Second.
Approved?
All in favor?
Yep. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes three to zero. Chairman's update. I'm going to turn the floor over to Mr. Riley.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for viewing the Board. Just a couple of quick updates on the permitting pipeline, the scheduling. We had a couple of items on the agenda tonight that requested continuances, and it was trying to accommodate the town in our process, so we appreciate that. One is 1639 Broadway, and that's a continued public hearing. We're going to continue that till December 7th, so that we can conduct what's called the DPRC Development Plan Review Committee. This is a town-level staff meeting to review some of the plans, work some things out, and the applicant's been very cooperative on that, so we appreciate that, and that's why that's being continued tonight to December 7th, the next meeting. And the other one is Boulder Road. It's been continued quite a few times, but we're trying to work out some engineering issues, so they're, you know, working with us, and the reason for that continuance is, again, to kind of make progress on a lot of the Planning Board concerns and make sure we get that project right. So that will be continued to December 7th, for engineering review and et cetera. So those are the permitting pipeline logistical updates I wanted to give to you. That's all I have right now.
Thank you, sir. Nancy, do we have any new submissions?
No, we do not.
We do not? Okay. Flip over to Mr. Durkin. Larry, do you have anything to report to the Board?
I think, you know, I think I'll bring it up when we get to the public hearing phase in terms of the engineering report.
Okay.
The only site that here, you know, just a general recommendation to the Board is, you know, the minimum requirement is we receive hard copies of plans, you know, full-size, seven days in advance, and, you know, I suggest the Board and the Planning Director considering letting applicants know that if they don't meet that, then they shouldn't come to the Planning Board.
We've been very clear on that.
Okay.
But thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other news from Board Members?
No. Would you like a temporary motion, a motion for a temporary recess until the 7:15 hearing?
We're going to make a motion to take a short break till 7:15 hearing because it is an open meeting hearing?
So moved.
Rich?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Take a short break. See if anyone from the neighborhood shows. From the meeting, anyone that would like to speak, I'm going to ask you to come to the podium, so that it could be recorded. Richard, I believe that you're representing Mr. Magnum, or you're representing the applicant?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Proceed.
We shall proceed.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. For the record, Attorney Richard Magnum with the office at 194 Central Street here in Saugus, representing the applicant Raising Canes LLC. With me here this evening is Adam Caracci from Raising Canes, Matt Bowler, excuse me, Matt Ashley from Bowler, hasn't taken over the company yet, Ernie, and technically the owners of the property. Previous to this, as you know, as some of you were participants, there was a DPRC meeting back in June. Comments were made by department heads, responses were made. Based upon those responses and that interaction, the applications for a massive plan and site plan review are before you this evening. At this time, I'll turn it over to Adam for some brief words on Raising Canes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the Board for having me this evening. As Rich said, my name is Adam Caracci. I'm with Raising Canes. I'm the Senior Property Development Manager for the East Coast. Just wanted to introduce the brand to you guys. It may not be something you've heard of before. We are a chicken finger restaurant. We serve one thing, and it's our one love, and that's the quality chicken finger meal. Each meal comes with basically the number of chicken fingers you choose, french fries, Texas toast, and coleslaw. There's no salads, there's no shakes. So our menu is focused, and we do that one thing, and we do it well, and that's what differentiates us from other people in the industry. So far, this would be our fifth restaurant in the area. We have actually been in the area since 2009 with a location in Boston College, but we recently this year opened in Marlborough, Methuen, and we opened a Back Bay location, so this is the next one up on the list, and we're excited to be in your community. We've been trying to get into Saugus for about three years now, just with finding a location and then going through the process. It does take some time, but we're excited to be here this evening and to tell you a little bit about the development, and if you have any questions about the operations, that's what I'm here for, and I'd be happy to answer those. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Best spot on that other side, probably. So Matthew Ashley with Bowler Engineering.
Cable, Ashley, move to this one.
Oh, okay, gotcha. I took it further out of view, sorry. Thank you for having us here today. So I am the Civil Site Development on the job, and would love to walk you through. Is the mic going to pick me up on this side? Is that okay?
Yeah.
Awesome. So just to kind of get your bearings here, we're located at 799 Broadway. Kind of the big landmark is the Hilltop Steakhouse, or the old former Hilltop Steakhouse. It's just two doors down there on Route 1. We are southbound on Route 1, and this is the Wendy's, this is kind of your other location. So the existing site right now is a vacant building, a rather large vacant building, and we are proposing to redevelop the site with a dual drive-through Raising Canes with a right-in, right-out-only onto Route 1, with a full bypass lane as well. Like Rich mentioned earlier, gone through a couple different meetings with the town inside the city and DPRC, along with meeting with Fire, and had some conversations with the town engineer as well up to this point to just kind of continue our coordination. So everything that we submitted to the Planning Board has incorporated all that feedback from all the various departments, and we're continuing to incorporate more feedback as we go along here. We have additionally also submitted to Conservation Commission, and we got issued our Order of Conditions last night here with a clean review from the state as well. And we are also currently in review with Mass DOT, had preliminary conversations with them, formally have submitted, and they're currently reviewing our plans as well that we've submitted here. So happy to go into lots more detail about the site, but also happy to answer any questions you have at this time.
Yeah, we had just received the comments, so we were trying to go through them. Would it be helpful for the Board if maybe you could go through them, just kind of read the responses?
Yeah, would you like me to go through all of them, or just through a couple, kind of like the higher points?
Maybe just the ones that are still outstanding.
Yeah.
It's up to the Board. I mean, I don't want to speak for the Board. Is that helpful?
No.
No problem.
We literally, like, just received this tonight, so that's why.
Gotcha, yeah, no problem. So I'll start with the DPRC comments, and then I think Engineering issued a separate letter as well, so I can cover that afterwards. So a lot of the first comments from Fire were just in general about site access around the property. We've worked with them from the very beginning, so they didn't really have any concerns there, just stating that the sprinkler system and some other stuff, once we get into the building permit, would have to be addressed there, which we certainly would when we get into a full CD set for the building.
And I can just add, I believe you've done a hydro test for the suppression system design, just that the results are outstanding, you know, to me, so.
Correct, yeah. We have conducted that, and I will pass those along to the town. Yep, absolutely. There's also just, we do have a detention system proposed out back underneath the drive-through. They just wanted to make sure that that was H-20 rated for their fire truck to circulate around, which was designed to manufacture specifications to do that. Jumping on to police, they just wanted to make sure we're coordinating with DOT, which we have from the very beginning and currently in review with them. Additionally, anyone that knows Raising Canes is, they get real excited when they open a new store location, and Raising Canes is great about coordinating with the local police on grand opening and making sure everyone's comfortable with what's going on during the honeymoon period. And they also just wanted to make sure we submitted a traffic management plan, which was submitted with the application as well. Town engineer comments as part of the DPRC are in here. I might jump over those now and just circle back if that's okay with everyone. Planning Board, so met with Chris and his team a handful of times ahead of time with the town manager's office, and wanted to acknowledge that a traffic report was needed, about talking about how snow will be managed on the property. Obviously, it is a very tight property with limited space, so landscaping areas as appropriate will be managed, and then anything that needs to get taken off the property if needed would do, so it wouldn't impact any type of navigation around the building. I think the next couple of comments here are relative to the existing easement on the property, which is located off to the site, so that's just an existing easement for access to the properties in the rear, along with National Grid to maintain. I think there's a gas main back there to get back. Moving on to planning, our building inspector, again, they've been in the talks with us from the very beginning, and I think he recently responded up to this hearing that we have addressed all his comments so far and didn't have any concerns. Planning went into DOT again, and the 10-foot landscape buffer on the property, which is maintained with the exception of the existing access easement off to the side by the Route 1 Grill House. Obviously, looking for a high architectural building, which Raising Canes produces, and I'm happy to show some elevations here tonight if the Board would like to see that. Vertical granite curving was a request. We provided vertical granite curving coming into the property along the frontage where the sidewalk is proposed to be replaced, and then monolithic curving up against the building where it's concrete. The other concern was is Raising Canes likes to have a outside dining area, especially after everything that we've gone through in the last couple of years, just another safe place for people to ease if that's their preference, the one to eat out, and just wanted to make sure there was adequate protection against that as there is parking in front of that. So we proposed bollards throughout that area and then put in some landscaping as well, so it's not something that you're just staring at a bollard.
So there won't be any fencing up around that? It'll be open, just with bollards?
There's fencing.
There's fencing? Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, there's plants, some plantings, fencing tables, yeah.
Just thinking if, like, there were little ones eaten out there that can't...
Yeah, yeah, I think that was a comment we had during the DPRC too as well. But yeah, so I mean, there will be access from the front, but everything else will be fencing around the front.
Okay.
Sorry. There we go. One comment is the trash enclosure. I know we've been working through that from the very beginning, so currently the trash enclosures here be fully enclosed unless it is being emptied, and we're proposing landscape it around it. I know a concern is, did it want to see visually like a trash enclosure, but this will be, you're not going to see anything. It'll be fully enclosed, look just like a structure, and then we also added a bunch of landscaping around it to hide the visibility as best as we could while still maintaining access that the trash companies will need when they come to pick up at, you know, random times that works on their schedule. The last couple of comments here, we'll have to go in for the Board of Health, acknowledge wanted a minimum 1,000-gallon exterior grease trap, which that's not a problem as well.
2,000 gallons, right? Did you say 1,000?
I had 1,000 in my note from here, but happy to provide a 2,000 gallon. That's what's requested.
Yeah, I know. That, one of my comments was, you know, said a grease trap 2,000 will be proposed, and what you show on the plan is a 2,000 gallon.
Okay, I see the confusion. Yeah, it looks like the Board of Health made a comment and requested 1,000 gallon, and then I have my other one right here, and your right is 2,000 gallon.
Yep.
So it is 2,000. Yep, sorry. I was going to say 1,000.
We know what the business is, you know.
There is a stick with the grease traps.
And then the last section here is for conservation. Obviously, we were jurisdictional with the wetland located out in the rear of the property, and like I stated earlier, we went through with them and got issued our Order of Conditions last night, so they were comfortable with everything that we've proposed.
Do you have those order petitions?
Not yet. Just got it last night.
Okay.
So I think there's an appeal period as well, and we just have to wait out for that, and then obviously can share it with the Board if they need it.
So you have a couple of questions?
Yeah.
Based on the right-of-way easement?
Okay.
Do we have a letter between yourself and the applicant as who's going to maintain that?
Maintain in what way?
Well, you're going to use, you're going to use that as part of the property, or if you are exiting.
Correct.
So as far as snow, who's going to plow it, who's going to take care of it, who's going to maintain it?
I can't speak directly, but I think if it's, it's part of Raising Canes operations, so I think that we'd take care of it unless I'm mistaken.
So the latest lease area is essentially this entire black line here. I believe that's correct. We took the triangular piece in the background on, right?
Yeah.
So anything that's within our lease area, we would maintain per the lease. So then, basically, the entire easement through our site, I mean, this is all, this is all us, like, this is all our area, so.
So you would maintain the full area?
Correct.
All the way down your triangle that's on the...
We have not really specifically spoken about this area in the back. I think that there are driveways off of here, but I'm happy to continue the conversations with the Nicholas about who maintains this.
We would like to see a written agreement between yourselves and the owners, because I believe it is also a filing to access the back property, so we want to make sure that that's not blocked and is kept open.
Okay.
So if you, just release the Board of any liability. So is there an agreement in place that maybe was covered?
Yeah, and it may already be spelt out in the lease.
And I think it's in the engineer's report, but one of the things is to show off subsurface utilities to the businesses, residences in the rear, you know, and, you know, depending on the age and conditions, utilities, they may require these be replaced. So I talked about it a little bit with Matt, and not everything's shown yet. You know, we just don't want those people to be forgotten. You know, a lot of it is, what you don't want is you don't want breaks, you know, you don't want sewage overflows, you don't want to be ripping up the pavement. So I think it's just prudent to, you know, document all those utilities and just see what the age and condition, you know, not trying to create extra fences or extra work, but is that property all in the back owned by you? Are those houses separate, or?
Yes, they're all owned by us.
They're all owned by you?
Yes.
And that's your private utilities that serve them?
Yes. As far as maintaining, I went over lease with them. Whatever boundaries they've got, they've got the front lot and the back lot. They were required to maintain and take care of anything that is within those boundaries, so if that answers.
Yeah, if you have that in writing?
I believe it is.
We can make it part of this project. Another question, if I may, while you're right there?
Sure.
The traffic that comes around through the drive-through is not going to be able to make a right-hand turn to get on that private way, correct? And what's going to stop them?
We will have signage that says "local residents only," and I don't believe it's a cut-through to anything, so I don't think there'll be any advantage, but we don't want to block resident access, but we'll put enough signage that says you can't go that way.
Yeah, it's actually striped.
And that's okay with the owners of the property, Mr. Nicholas?
We've had it open for 50 years like that with the Grill House and the Body Shop out back and Aldo and all that, and we really don't have a big problem. We already have signage up there that says "private property, do not enter." As long as it's properly, you know, signed, I don't think it would be an issue.
Okay. Thank you.
And if I could just address your comments about, so all of this is going to be replaced, curbing, pavement, all of that, up to, I believe, roughly here, and then we'll match existing. We have done subsurface utility explorations, and the only utility that we've identified out here is the gas main, and it's probably 60 years old based on the age of the easement. Everything else is overhead, power, cable, telephone.
What about water?
Water? Are you guys being served from the rear?
No.
It's coming through there? Okay, so.
We, yeah, I know Larry, you and I spoke about that briefly, and when we go out and video the utilities, which we'll coordinate with you as well, we wanted to take a look at that. I think we identified it partially, and then you just want us to take a little further back, which we can look into.
The house is sewn. Are the septic system?
Septic system, yeah.
Okay.
The Body Shop and the Grill House naturally, and so the entire are all on sewer, and it goes out back to Forest Street, but the two homes are not here on septic.
Okay.
And that gas line that goes out back, that's not that old. I actually brought it in because I had gas pipe spray boots, and that's maybe 10 years old.
Okay, so, all right. Yeah, if you put it on the plan, is it, is it plastic pipe, polyethylene, or yellow pipe?
Yeah, yellow pipe, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it's mentioned on the survey. We showed it going back there.
Great.
Yep.
Now, is there a Tennessee gas line easement that runs through that property as well?
That's on the backside of it.
It's on the backside of it?
Yes.
Thank you. Any other questions from Board Members?
Yeah, I got one.
Sure.
The property's always been a cut-through to get to the other businesses. I can, I can clearly see, but is it still going to remain, any opening from Wendy's at the rear there over, or is that going to be completely closed?
This has all been closed off. We're closing multiple drive-throughs along Broadway.
And then over on the Grill House side, that's going to be curbing, or that's going to be open?
That will still remain open here.
Here?
Yep.
Only there, okay.
Only there, yep.
All right.
I can, it's the Board, I can get into some of the comments and the engineers.
Just one comment I have, Larry. And I think Jeanie brought this up. Items like these, we try to have in the Thursday before the meetings, so that the Board has time to review them, so that questions come about that we have time to appear and ask you, so it doesn't prolong this process any longer than what it has to be. So if we could, any change of plans, it'll be done in red-line drawings. Hopefully, there's not any, but if you do change it, once it's been approved, we require red-line drawings, and again, seven days before the next meeting, should you be called in. So just to bring up the speed on some of our procedures, so, but I appreciate this. I'll turn it over to Larry.
I think minimum seven days.
More time, the better.
Don't provide, you know, provide full-size plans. I printed these and distributed them. I printed the comments, and I don't want to do your clerical work again. I won't do it again.
Understood. Thank you.
To getting to the engineer's report, I think my item 1.2 is site environmental concerns. You know, Engineering suggests, you know, in 1025 and 1014 emails, that the engineer, the status of the December 5th 2022 geotechnical report by TerraCon be discussed by the developers representative that the plan is in the meeting. You know, I think I've got a copy of that report from Conservation Commission, and so what's the, what's the status? And I think, you know, one of, at least in somewhere, I state that, you know, we want all correspondence with Mass DEP. You know, we want to know that there's no environmental concerns, and when they talk about peer review, I'll mention something then, but, you know, the town may want a peer review to, and re-well environmental reports and the status with the state. You know, we just want to make sure the site's good, not, not trying to extend the project, but in the interest of, you know, that once you're good to go, you're good to go. I don't know if you want to address that now?
I can address that. Yep. So early on, even when we were negotiating the lease, Nicholas already had a plan to do that. Basically, they want to know that we get approved, and then we basically would waive our conditions, and then they would start the process. But everything's teed up and ready to go. It's just a matter of, I think, getting approved, and then we'll tell you guys to release the consultant, and they're managing the cleanup.
So what is, what is it gasoline? What's the chemicals of concern?
It's already been remediated. It was tanks in the ground from an old gas station.
Okay.
And they were taken out 25 years ago, but there was one remaining tank that was a small asphalt, one like a seal coat, and that was taken out, and then I wanted to do a 21E, and so I hired E&amp;A Engineering, Environmental Engineering, and they came and did, they did test borings through everything, inside the building, outside the building, and they only found one area that had any remnants of it. It was right by where that tank was, and we had that removed, and, and we got a clean bill of health from it.
Great. So yeah, if we get, you know, if the Board can get all the correspondence, just, you know, sound, sound fantastic. Glad it's not a big deal, glad it's not going to slow you down, that, that's, that's going on. I think.
Did they give you a, from close, did they give you a report on that?
Yes, yeah.
If you'd be kind enough to send that there. It's okay? On file?
Yeah.
Okay.
Sorry.
Thank you. I think, you know, 1.3 is use of the private sewer to get to the town system, so we've been trading some correspondence, and, you know, we're of the same mind. This private sewer is on your, your guys' property, and I think it's in the best interest of the project, and you're planning to do it anyway, is to camera everything. You know, last thing the town wants to happen is a beautiful facility, lines down the street, you know, safely handled by, by the detailed police, but we don't want sewage blowing out of, out of a manhole. So, so I think, you know, this has been some, so I think the idea is, and Matt's been fabulous. I think the plan is, when he's got that scheduled, I will be out there in the DPW water and sewer foreman, and, you know, we'll just discuss the whole project. I, you know, I do want to commend Bowler on this project and the applicant. I think, you know, after the DPRC process, you know, we shared drawings and we've had some conversations, and I think the plans are, at least from water, sewer drain, are well-advanced. You know, this is, I'm fairly new with the town, and I, and this is one of the, this is the first project I've been involved from DPRC forward, so I think, I think it's been a good collaboration, and it sounds like you've been doing the same with the other departments. So, so, you know, this is, it's only going to help you get in business quicker. So, you know, just... So, you know, just commend you guys and, you know, all of you on this. Um, so yeah, so the sewer, we've talked about it there. The sewer goes out the back to, um, to the Nicolai Circle and, uh, and, you know, and I, I think one of the things is just, uh, you know, we'd like to see that whole plan and profile. It's a, I know it's a private line, but it's still good for the town to have the records. Um, and, and I think, um, uh, just, you know, I think I, I suggest that it be in a written, uh, a written request to the town for acceptance. Um, you know, just show your counts and stuff. Rather just do it, you know, just see that everything's been addressed and, you know, no one wants problems and, and I think, you know, having a thousand, 2,000 gallon grease trap is, uh, Jeannie knows, I, you know, as in Gloucester, I, I managed the fats, those and grease program, so I don't let it know that I was the chief of the grease police. But, you know, I.
It's an honor.
My job is, my job is as much as the health department, you know, to keep the grease out of the sewer, because that's something that could clog you, that's something could put you, put you out, put, put you out of business, you know, and that, that's a long reply to, to rod and jet, right? No one wants that expense.
Um, if I may, we, we are, um, I didn't mention this, but we have over 750 locations. Um, or we have a whole team that maintains our grease traps, uh, and the facilities department nationally, so, um, we're very well aware. This is over a $5 million investment. Um, we use high-quality materials, our standards are high, like, we're not trying to cut corners here.
It shows.
Excellent. That, you know, thank you. Um, all right. Uh, let's see. So I think, I think the biggest thing is we talked about the, the, the property in the rear, um, mentioned mass DOT on the engineering note comment. Um, I think, um, you know, we mentioned I need the results of the hydrant test. Um, roof groundwater infiltration. I, I've got to look at the GeoTech Report. What they say is that it's too much ledge there, they can't do infiltration. There's ledge everywhere in Saugus. Um, you know, we'll look at the report and we'll consider it, but it, the, this, the, you know, we may, the engineer, we may require that you infiltrate the roof, roof water. Um, it's a new building. It's, yes, it's smaller than the old footprint. And that's one of the reasons, um, you know, I've asked, my comment number seven is, you know, I just want all the correspondence with vast DOT. My fear is, is, uh, I don't, I don't want, I know you've, you've got a great stormwater system, it's all curb. I just don't want mass DOT to get upset that there's, there's more stormwater, um, going into Route One, you know, which, which is a safety hazard. So again, if you, you know, in the, in addition to all the, the DEP issues, you know, everything closed with regard to environmental concerns, you know, just share with us, you know, the correspondence with DOT. Um, you just, again, we'd rather just know everything upfront, so there's no problems, no hecups.
Sorry to clarify, are you asking for the, the roof leaders to not go into the underground storage system, but to, to go into a drywall? Is that what we're saying?
I, correct me if I'm wrong, sorry. I think, um, they're looking to see us infiltrate, um, the entire roof if it's even into the system out back that we have. Um, the, the soil conditions are, um, a C or D-type material along with the, the ledge out there, so it doesn't promote great infiltration, so that's why we weren't promoting it. We already have the system in place to infiltrate if we thought it was a good fit for that. Um, like, there's really not much of a difference from the system that we have out there, um, to promote infiltration besides just not lining the bottom. Um, so that's why we weren't proposing infiltration, but we did look at it because I know that was a comment coming up front. Um, I can also tell you that we're reducing all the peaks, um, in volume to Route One, so everything's going down from a DOT perspective.
You know, I, I see your comment and I take it to heart. Well, I'll review the technical report.
Yep.
Typically, you know, um, when there's a, five guys is going in that they tore down the old building, they're, they're doing infiltration. They, you know, ledge is everywhere, so we'll discuss it, okay?
Not a problem, yep.
And, uh, you know, it's easy enough to even put the infiltration in the parking areas. But we'll, we'll table it for now and, and I'll get a chance to look at.
Larry, before you can take it, while you're on that subject, is there a lot of ledge on that, on that site?
Yeah, when they did the, um, the bores.
Yes.
Checking for the, um, contamination, they said they hit a lot of ledge.
Okay, so are we planning on blasting or are we planning on pneumatic cameras or?
We don't, we don't blast, totally. Pneumatic cameras.
Pneumatic cameras?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And, and somewhere I've got requested for all the boring logs, just to see, um, probably something I've provided in the plans, but that's, that's a minor requirement, um, just to see. Uh, comment 13, you know, I mentioned that kind of the Saugus DPW standard, you know, two and a half inches of binder, one and a half inches of top course, bedding shall be six inches of crushed stone and 12 inches. Um, your response is your GeoTexas, um, 12 inches of base course. Um, good luck with the DPW director on that, you know, uh, Saugus standards are the Saugus standards and I think, you know, that, that may be a requirement. I mean, it, it seems like the town, you know, they were 12 inches of base and six inches of crushed and then the layers of asphalt. Uh, your comment seems to say, your Geotechnical Report says 12 inches of, of base course is enough, so, um, 12 inches of binder course, 12 inches base course. Uh, I don't know, I'm just trying to understand that.
I, I thought the, uh, the, what you were requesting is essentially what our GEO report was suggesting as well. Um, if, if it's not matching up exactly as you thought, or maybe my response was unclear, apologies, but I, I thought they, they matched up to what you wanted, so.
Okay. I just know that, that, you know, there's bedding shall be six inches of crushed stone and 12 inches of gravel base, so, you know, that's, that's 18 inches before the asphalt. So we can, we can just clarify that.
Yeah.
I, you know, I know the, the DPW's very, you know, very particular on, on those requirements and, um, you know, and they'll be reviewing everything as, as well as I am.
So, I'm just unclear. So did, did the DPW let them know what they're requiring?
I put that on my comment. That's, that's one of my comments for, for the DPRC.
Oh, okay.
And I haven't, you know, we just got these, so I haven't.
I don't think this is meant to the DPW.
Not yet, not yet.
Okay.
I, you know, I told them you guys are coming for the first time. You know, I, I have met with them, talked to the site over twice and, and I got some really good input from, from them and, uh, you know, they'll be reviewing this, you know, subsequently to when we get all our submissions. What they have me do is brief them on the whole project, but I, you know, this is, this, this is all constructive and, you know, you know, looks good. That, that's it for my con, you know, you know, that's, that's me going over. I had enough time to look through these, you know, we, we can still not fully address, but, you know, I hit the main things and, no, it's, it's looking good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Any questions? Chris, can I call on you, um, regards to a peer, peer review consultant for this job?
I'd like to make some comments for the record.
Sure, go right ahead.
If I may?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chair, okay, through you and board. So, um, they've done a really nice job supporting the DPRC comments for the most part, so that's appreciated. It's a welcome business, you know, coming in, demolishing a structure for a better structure and site, so we appreciate that. Uh, but these comments will be familiar because we've been talking about them from the pre-application meeting with the DPRC from the planning, uh, department. So first one is that trash enclosure. Operationally, I understand your need for it, for your explanation for your need. It, it looks big for the, the size of the facility and the operation. And I have permitted several projects like this where the trash enclosure fit in the back. I know you're into a resource area there and that's a concern, but, um, given that trash is picked up outside of operational hours, that remains to me a mystery why that trash enclosure can't be moved to the rear of the site. That's number one. Number two is, uh, the acceleration lane on Route One. That is a gauntlet out there. And, you know, seeing the acceleration lane from Wendy's, that's the reason why we look for those and mass DOT almost always agrees with us. Uh, you know, we really, I think, needed a de, some kind of de-acceleration lane, at least past the pedestrian, uh, entrance on the sidewalk, just a three or four something to make that safer. You're going to have people pulling out of Wendy's, merging into traffic, the people coming into your site. I've lived through that. I, it's, it's not safe. Um, so that's why I called that out. Um, on the landscaping, you've done a really nice job in the back there with that robust landscaping, the variety of things. Um, that's great, we appreciate that. The location of it in the back will not be enjoyed by as many people as we generally seek. So, uh, you know, keeping that, that's great. If we could see more landscaping, low-level landscaping that doesn't interfere with the sightlines on that front grass burn on Route One and around that apron that is, you could land a helicopter on that, I get that's useful, but, um, the front entrance apron, more landscaping there. And if that trash enclosure isn't going to move, we definitely need more landscaping on that front strip. Uh, reason why, it, in our zoning and for many years, uh, the streetscape is the emphasis. Improving the streetscape along Route One in Saugus, making things look better. You can see that as you go up and down. Recent improvements to a lot of sites on the landscaping and the streetscape on the front edge, that's a priority. So where we see something that wouldn't want to be visual from the front, like the trash enclosure, if, if we can't move that, then we need to see a lot more landscaping up front to screen that on the front as people go by. So, um, again, you know, really, you know, positive result here is as good as a welcome business and you've done a nice job and you've been responsive, so we appreciate all that. But, uh, those things are kind of fundamental things to the success of a site, a long-term sustainable site. And, uh, like to see some kind of movement on that, it's the pleasure of the board. Also on the tops, could be a flat roof. So any mechanicals up there, we, we'd like to see screens.
Or blind screen.
We don't see things sticking out. And that's all I have.
The, excuse me, sorry. Mr. Chair, the, is that the trash enclosure right there, that gray bill? Yeah, okay, that's what I saw. And that's a walkway?
It's a walkway out of the back of the restaurant into the trash enclosure. This is a mandor for them to get through to the back of the trash. They don't have to open the gates, they can go through the back. These bollards to keep the dumpsters from banging in and keeping clearance. Um, and then, uh, if I may, the trash enclosure will be, um, same material as the building, so it'll be brick. Uh, the gates are attracts material, um, so they are a wood composite. Um, it's not like a chain link fence, like it's, it's highly decorative compared to what I think people are used to. Um, operationally, this is an issue for us. Uh, we use third-party trash haulers, we don't control when they come. They could come at 10:00 in the morning, uh, they could come at noon and the business, that's like bright as lunchtime. So if they're trying to come down the drive-through, originally it was asked that we rotate this like 180 degrees and they come this way through, or we stick it back here, but then this is the resource area. There's some significant fall back here as well.
If I can just correct that, I think the idea was to do it on the right rear of the site where you have that radius.
Right here?
On the other side.
Right here?
Yeah.
Uh, I believe we looked at it here and then it was asked that we rotated 180 degrees and look at coming in this way.
Don't recall that, but look at.
So can you just show me how you get around that, go to the drive-through?
So how somebody would get into the drive-through?
Yeah, you come in there. I thought the two lanes went this way and went around there. I don't remember that, the trash being right there.
Right, so if you, you know, if you're, if you're a, a customer and you're coming in this way, um, this is two-way traffic, uh, up to a point. So then it's one way through here. This is a bypass lane to circulate around the site if you decide you don't want to get in line. Uh, and then you can either go back through and park or you can leave the site. Um, this is do not enter, so no one's going to be coming this way to go the other way around a building. The only people going back there will be the residents. Uh, and then.
So you come in and you go to the right and then where does the drive, to, show me the drive-through lane.
But these are the two drive-through lanes.
Oh, okay, all right, so that, the drive-through, all right, so that big gray, I thought you were saying that was the trash facility.
This is not the trash, no. This is actually a covered canopy for the crew members.
Oh, okay.
To stand under, so that in the winter it's got heaters and lights and.
Okay, because I was like, that is a very big trash.
No, 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 that's, this is a, this is a canopy. There's another one over here as well. So we, um, we employ, uh, tablets in the drive-through to help get people through the drive-through.
To do the pre-order.
Yeah, very similar to what some other people are doing. Um, so we have an amenity area basically for them to stand under so there aren't any elements. That's what that is and that's what this is.
So the two black dots are the trash?
These are the two trash bins.
Okay.
They are eight cubic yard dumpsters. One's recycling, one is trash. Um, the, uh, I hate to say it, but we do generate a lot of trash. And so operationally, we, we need the two eight cubic yard dumpsters, which is what's driving the size of the enclosure. Um, the chicken, what comes in boxes that are about the, this big, they're cardboard, they're rigid, um, they don't break down very easily so that they don't break in transit. And so they take up a lot of room. So we're typically getting trash picked up daily and, um, it fills up very quickly.
So getting back to the, the trash pickup, when you said that you don't have any control of when they can come, so it could, if they showed up at lunch, how would they get there with the lines getting into the drive-through?
So the drive-through is fully stacked. Uh, we studied other restaurants and made sure that we could get the peak, uh, lunch rush into the drive-through. And so, and it should only be that they get to, you know, no, no further past this point. Obviously, when we open, that's going to be different and we'll have to have plans in place and we, we addressed that with the traffic management plan. Um, but ordinarily, they should not be blocked at this point. However, if they were trying to come in this drive-through, they'd be going against traffic and then potentially couldn't get to the enclosure.
Okay.
And that.
I don't remember that being discussed, but, um, boy, take it.
As far as adding landscaping here, I'm more than happy to. I'm honestly not sure why it's not done. And then were there, um, a reason why, was it like an easement with the power company or something, why we can't have? Typically, we'd have a double hedgerow, so we can add double hedgerow.
Yeah.
Or we can do a low fence or something decorative to help them through that. Um, it, it's normally not, uh, I don't know, I'm sorry, I'm not sure why there's not anything there.
Mr. Reddick?
Those, um, the striped areas, yeah, I understand you're trying to achieve some visual separation, but to me, those don't achieve much of anything. So if you could landscape those striped areas, I'm talking about the stripe bump out next to the trash enclosure on either side.
Here?
If we have to live with that trash enclosure and it's, it's the pleasure of the board, whether you consider that, to landscape thoroughly those, those striped areas would be a, a great improvement. And then to go in front and do the same so that, you know, the, um, vision field as you're driving by just sees landscaping and I don't see the trash enclosure. But that's what I'd suggest. The striped areas on the pavement, right?
I see, right there.
On either side, landscape it.
So this is, uh, more than likely for a reason. Um, typically it would be turn movement of vehicles to get in there. Probably they're going to have to come in and, and then back up and multi-point turn. Is that why we're showing this as being striped instead of a island?
Correct.
You know, for sort of viewing something to primarily achieve internal circulation for trash trucks, I think we missed something.
So...
The question I have is you said that you have no control of the pickup. These pickups won't be 2 o'clock, 3 o'clock, 4 o'clock in the morning?
No, they'll, I mean, they'll have to abide by our noise ordinances. They're private.
I think there is an audences on trash pickup.
There is.
So those two receptacles right there, you said you didn't think they could go in that back? For some reason, I thought they were in that back corner out of there.
No.
It just seems like...
We may have discussed this area briefly, but this is a no-structure setback for the conservation. And we came and talked to them about it, and they didn't like the idea of it over here, just closer to the resource area. But I think we may have looked at it briefly, and then we looked at all the other areas as well.
So they prohibited that, any consideration of that, in the no disturbs?
Yeah.
The order of conditions?
I don't think they specifically said that, but that was from our conversations with them.
I'll check on that, Mr. Chair and the board, on the order of conditions and what was brought.
Okay. Other than that, it looks good. It's really good.
Do you have an elevation?
Yeah.
So the building, to address the comment about the mechanical equipment, this is actually a wall that would go around the mechanical equipment on the roof. A little wall, so none of this will be visible. And the building is made up of different materials. Stucco, brick, metal, and... There's no stone on this one, I'm sorry. There's two different types of brick. There's different planes, so there's some texture. It's not just a box. So like these towers will stick out. We break it up with the different materials every 70 feet to make it look a little bit more interesting and attractive. We've also got additional glazing around the building, so it's not just on the front. It goes all the way around to try and break up that plane.
Do you have a rendering of what the trash facility will take?
I do not, unfortunately, but it will match the materials of the building. So it would be basically one of these bricks. It'd be a Samuel enclosure with a brick veneer.
On the...
On the sides, and then the doors would be the Trex material.
If I may, Mr. Chair.
Yep.
Thank you. What is that? The red thing? What, the thing on the, yes, that?
The dog? Is that the dog?
It's a mural, yes. It's a... And we'll do signage is a whole other thing. So we'll come back for that, but just, that's a mural. It is the One Love Heart. So essentially, it's an aluminum standoff from a red aluminum backer. And it provides some visual interest in the drive-through for the customers while they're in line. But it tells the story of Raisin Cane's. Our founder named the company after his dog, Raisin Cane. And the salmon, there's a hard hat, there's a lawn, and there's a disco ball. All have story or elements from him starting the business. So he actually started the company by working, he saved the money by working as a boiler maker in California, so the hard hat. And then he has the sockeye salmon in there. He worked as a salmon fisherman in Alaska for about six months to help save up money. And the one is our one love, the quality chicken finger meal, the disco ball, the first restaurant outside the gates of LSU. He had very little money from what he had saved up, so he decorated with what he could get. And he went to like Spencer's and bought a disco ball to put up. There was a skylight, there is a skylight, the restaurant's still open. And he put the disco ball in there to provide some interest inside of the restaurant. So to this day, every restaurant has disco balls inside of it.
That was my next question.
And so...
Have you considered signage?
Tells the story.
Well, just so you know, we've had some, I guess, regulatory issues with murals. So I'd like the idea, it's a good concept, and you know what you're trying to achieve there. I think if we were to consider, and I would recommend to the board, if you consider a mural, that it have a Saguas-related theme to it?
I don't think that's considered a mural, just my own opinion. I think that's more signage than a mural, in my opinion.
So then that gets into the signage requirements.
So it would be signage.
Yeah. We'll do that, we'll look at that, give you some feedback.
Mr. Chair, can I ask just a general product question? And, you know, how good are the chicken fingers? And how do you make them? Are they marinated? Why have you been so successful?
So our chicken fingers are made from the tenderloin. That's the main difference. Most places, these chicken breasts, it's cut up. And it's marinated for 24 hours in-house. It's never frozen. It comes in refrigerated, stays refrigerated. After it's marinated, it's hand-battered. And then we don't use the same type of batter that you would find like another QSR. So it's flour, egg, milk. And it doesn't have that crunchy, like, thick layer of batter. It's very... It's just applied very well. And mostly chicken, the tenderloin. So because it's marinated for 24 hours, it's pretty juicy. And the real thing that I hear people talk about is our sauce, which is a secret. I don't even know the ingredients, but it's like a rumelog. And it's tangy. We only do that and honey mustard, so we don't have like, there's no barbecue, there's no ranch. You can actually buy it by the cup. People do that. And so we've also got Texas toast that tends to be a little bit different, particularly in this part of the country than what people are used to. It's a thick piece of toast like that big, about that big around. A lot of people come to just the toast. And then we do crinkle-cut fries. They're...
They frozen?
They are frozen because they have to be frozen to cook properly, otherwise they'd be soggy. But they're made for us specifically.
Are they seasoned or just plain?
They're salted. We really just try and keep it as like simple as possible, and people like it.
You know, asking about trade secrets could be considered...
I'm not asking for trade secrets.
Careful here.
Jesse's not here. I'm not asking for blank checks either. I'm joking. Your fryer grease, how do you handle the fryer grease?
We use a DARPA system, so it's a closed-loop system. It ties directly into the back of the fryers when it's time to empty the grease, which I think is every couple of hours, every two hours or something like that. They pull the switch, it drains out. It's like a central vacuum system. It goes into a tank, which is in this part of the building. And then there's a port on the building that the vacuum truck will come, hook into, suck it out, so that the oil is never loose, other than when they pour it out of the jibs into the fryer after it's been drained and cleaned. So spent oil is never exposed anywhere. So it's not, there's not like a potential it's gonna get on the drain.
So who picks that up? Is someone...
DARPA.
Okay.
That does themselves. They do it, I think, every couple of weeks.
I got a son who, he's still in his chicken finger phase, so... And I know there's a, you know, the DVW wire foreman is very anxious, you know, for you to be in business.
I have four family members that are in college that tell me I better hurry up and get this approved.
They drive, the kids drive to Boston just to... I've never had them, but I know the kids, they all do.
What's up? It's a good addition to our... Yeah, it's a good...
I agree.
And there's one on board.
Exciting. Okay.
Mr. Riley, as far as peer review?
So peer review, I was, the board would consider Tetra Tech for the civil traffic.
That's fine. Is the applicant aware of the procedure?
Yeah, so you would motion and vote to appoint Tetra Tech as the peer reviewer for the civil and traffic, and in this case also environmental, that town engineer has asked. And our standard fee that we require usually is $10,000 to start. And so that would be the motion.
So the motion is before the board?
Mr. Chair, I'll make the motion to retain Tetra Tech in the amount of a retainer of $10,000 for the civil, traffic, and environmental review. Peer review?
Do you have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I would just add, you know, stormwater, if you look at the stormwater as well.
I think that's part of the process.
Is there a clean-up civil now?
Okay, good. Thank you.
To conclude.
Is there an architectural peer review required for this?
I don't think so. This is sort of their brand, it's fine.
Yep.
And so I don't think that's needed here.
Can I ask a quick question about the peer review? As far as traffic goes, it's a DOT jurisdictional road out front, so I was just curious kind of the scope of that traffic review for the property?
Well, have you submitted before the DOT?
Yeah, we're under review currently with DOT.
Okay, so they would review what you've submitted and DOT's response?
Okay.
So there's just, it's an added protection for you as the owner?
Yeah, I was just kind of curious how...
Chris brought some very crucial ideas, knowing how the traffic is and the top of the hill. And it comes quick, and it's a lot of it, so...
No, understood. Yeah, I was just curious how that was with DOT out front. That's all.
DOT defers to the town quite frequently if the town has preferences or input. So they generally seek it and defer to it, unless it's some kind of safety issue that violates their standards.
Mr. Chair, do you have a motion on the floor?
Just if I could add, and...
Big money.
Okay. Well, just if I could add, you know, part of that peer review is all the DEP correspondence and all the mass DOT correspondence.
We have a motion on the floor. We just wanted to get some clarification.
Okay.
So the motion is that you're willing to hire a peer review consultant with a deposit of $10,000?
For the civil traffic and everything?
But for the studies that we've outlined, so... All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes three to zero.
If I may, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
When we get that going in, then the peer reviewer will prepare a scope, will get that to you. And then we'll get authorization from the town manager, which is required, and then he'll get underway. We'll provide all the information and plans. And then he should be able to turn that around quickly, although our next meeting is on the 7th. I don't know if he'll be able to make that to our deadline of a week before responses, but you may want to consider, pleasure of the board, when you want to continue to... Either the 7th or the 21st, and the 21st is probably more practical.
I don't think we're gonna go for 21st.
Okay.
We are just discussing that, whether or not we want to push it, because it's so close to Christmas, that we will skip the 21st.
We can, we'll make the 7th work if that's...
So if we can get, if we get the deposits right away, we get Tetra Tech on the review right away. We'll try to turn it around in that two weeks, because soon as we get the comments from Tetra Tech, we can, who would be the point person to give them to, so you guys can respond? Would that be you?
Yeah, myself or Rich, either of us, yeah, it'd be great.
And then the faster you respond to those, then if we could do all that by the 7th, I mean, you guys are pretty together. I think we could probably do that. You don't think that's a reasonable timeframe?
It's doable. Yeah, so we'll work with the peer reviewer to have them turn that around quickly, so you have time to respond. Get it in a week before this meeting on the 7th, so that's the... November 30th, Thursday, November 30th is what we're shooting for here. To get your response to the peer review. It depends on the peer review.
How soon do you think you could get the deposit for the peer review?
If I put the check request in tomorrow, I need, I need something from the city that says, "deposit $1,000," should we submit the purchase order?
The town.
The town, sorry. And I can submit it. It should get approved early next week. The checks normally mail on Wednesday, overnight UPS, Thursday's Thanksgiving, so...
So it's kind of close.
It may be the week of the 27th before we get the check.
Can I, can I ask you for a question?
I don't think we'd be able to do that. We can give the plans, that maybe be able to get a scope before. Yeah, I'll work on that.
Okay.
Pleasure of the board.
Thank you, Mr. Riley.
Thank you.
Mr. Dirk?
Can I ask for a point of clarification? You know, Tetra Tech will be retained. They can't start working until the count's set up, the town manager's gonna approve that.
That doesn't take, that's...
Well, my thing is, is we get the comments from Tetra Tech. Does the, are those given to Raisin Cane? Do they, next time they come to the board, have they answered the questions? Have they modified the plans?
That's the goal, yes, so Tetra Tech gives us...
With minimum of seven days, hard copies?
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
So it would be required seven days before the next meeting?
Yes, the planning board's peer review.
Yep.
Right? And you're letting, you're allowing the applicant to respond to the peer review?
That's correct.
That's the only way you need to approve that.
Yeah, it's not the same as like plans. I mean, we do prefer them there, but this is a tight timeframe. So if we got the, you know, as long as you get them to you and you get them back as soon as possible, not like, you know, an hour before the meeting. We prefer them a week before, but this is a situation where we're trying to, you know, keep moving with the holiday. We don't want to drag it on excessively if we don't need to. So I think if we try to work together, we can try to turn it around quickly.
Yeah, we'll turn around as quick as we can, and we'll be open and honest when we're gonna get it to you, and make sure it meets everyone's headline.
Typically, you get the Tetra Tech report first, or does John, who gets the peer review report first?
Now, we talked about how the one point person, and the board agreed that I could do that. So that goes, and I've told Tetra Tech, so they'll submit it to me, and...
Then you'll submit it to them?
You know, submit it to the board, obviously, at the same time, so yeah.
Okay.
Providing all goes well, do you have a date to start construction?
We still need to go to board of selectmen.
You still need to go before the board of selectmen for the drive-up?
Correct. And then we would, we're planning when we're done with the planning board to submit building plans, assuming the inspectional services will take them. I would like to be under construction by April. So if we can keep things moving, that would, I think that's achievable.
And your basic turnaround for a store of the size?
About 170 days. So you're looking at a full 2024 opening at this point.
You know, we sort of, in terms of the demolition, which is a big part of this, we sort of, I've talked to inspectional services about allowing them to proceed at their own risk on that. Technically, demolition isn't building a project without site plan and review approval. I'll need to clarify that with them. There's a distinction between, you know, they can go ahead and knock the building down.
We frown upon doing that in the middle of the night without your permit.
Yeah, definitely don't do that, but get to the inspectional services about your demolition permit early. Make sure, you know, you have an underway, but then that will give you a head start, right? And, but sometimes, I'll have to talk to them. Sometimes, is that considered because it's in anticipation of a project that requires site plan and review? Does that need the planning board approval first? I'll talk to them.
The only approval I think it would need, if they wanted to do demo, would be that of the owner who owns the existing building.
I would think.
Yep. And then they could just file for a demo permit. Doesn't mean they could put it back up at that point.
Yeah. Okay.
And if I add, in my comments, is this the whole permitting thing? But if your site contractor is not local, doing the water, sewer, drain, it can take up to 30 days to get a drain layers license. So be warned, if you're bringing someone in, start that process, you know, with the plumbing inspector and health department. So, you know, make sure you...
They'll be local.
And if you do demo at night, which you're not gonna do, then sometimes it takes the full 30 days to get that drain layers license, so... So plan ahead and, you know, I don't know if you have your contractor already, if you've got someone who does all your work for you.
No, we learned that lesson early on. So we've got two local contractors, one in Massachusetts, one in New Hampshire. One of them will be chosen for this project.
Excellent.
Any other questions from the board? Is there any questions from... Yep. Hearing done, it's the wish of the board.
I'll make a motion to continuous public hearing to December 7th meeting?
Do you have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes three to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good gentleman.
We'll see you on the 7th.
You gentlemen?
We'll see you on the 7th.
I'm sorry.
Nope, I will make a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn? Could I get a second?
Second, sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, thank you.
Thank you.